That will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. It will lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we retire, I just want to thank Dan, the pro tem, for running all of the meetings pretty much this whole year till now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved from April 1st, 2019, council, special council meeting minutes, public hearing, and the April 1st, 2019, regular council meeting minutes. Those will stand approved. Item D, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on something other than what's on the agenda?
I'm sorry, where is the agenda?
There's a copy of the...
This is my first...
Yep, no problem.
What do you like us to say?
There should be... And if you're not aware that it's on the agenda, most likely, if you're just coming here to talk to us, then it probably isn't. So go ahead and stand up to the podium here. And if you could fill out your name and address on the form there.
Yes, yes. You said write it on this form?
Yeah, write it on there and also tell us what your name is.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started. My name's Daniel Benton, and I reside at 534 High Street. And I've been in this town back for about two years now. And since I've been back in town, you know, I used to kind of live a, let's just say, not the way you should live. You know, I've had my problems with drugs. I've had my problems with a lot of different things. I put a lot of stuff, put it behind me, you know? And I went to prison, and I got out, and I was doing good. And since I've been in this town, I've had like five cases, anywhere from burning tickets to where the first cop shows up and says, "You know what? That's too green. Let it dry out." So be it. Second, third day, they come back, and the officer says, "Yeah, that's fine." Well, two days after that, I'm still burning the same stuff. All of a sudden, a cop goes up, "You need a ticket. You gave me a ticket for it." Because he referred back to the first cop's statement that says, "Hey, it's too green," you know? Let alone the second cop, you know, obviously, there was never anything said. I've gotten an obstruction after I let the police in my house two nights in a row to search for this Nicholas Krantz kid who worked at West Hoven Construction. I was nice enough to let the cops in, and no reason why. I knew that they was outside, because they were peeking in my windows. And so I let them inside. I let them go downstairs, track mud up through my house. Mind you, I did this twice. Even told them that I would leave the porch light on for them if this kid was there, okay? Well, it's 3:00 in the morning. They knock at my house. They don't have a search warrant. They don't have anything like that. They have an arrest warrant for this kid. When I asked the police to please leave, because they're sitting there telling me that he's in the house, like they did the other two times that I let them in the house, you know, shame on me, you know, first... Well, anyways, the third time when they come in, and I get arrested for obstruction because I asked them to leave my property. I had every right to ask them to leave the property. All they had to do is get their search warrant. But they want to say they knew he was in there. The only way that they could have known he was in there is by walking down the street and the side, or the driveway, the neighbor's driveway, which it's not visible from the road, and went and peeked in the windows again, which I didn't even know he was in there. They didn't even give me a chance to go back in the house and see if he was in there. Okay? Like I said, it's 3:00 in the morning. I don't know about the rest of you, after a hard day's work, I like to go home and have a couple of drinks, you know? I was tired. It was 3:00 in the morning. I end up with an obstruction, okay? I get done with that, and it's about six weeks later, I'm in a parked car in Rite Aid, in the parking lot. The key's not in the ignition, the car's not running. I get a driving under suspension. I go to court, take it to trial. The judge finds me guilty because I didn't look her in the eye. And that's exactly what she said on record, that since I didn't look her in the eye, that's why I was guilty. Now, there's a problem, okay? Because I can't keep doing the right thing to end up getting in trouble. And if you guys want to check, this is honestly on record, everything that I'm telling you has happened to me. And the judge specifically said that because when the prosecution wants to go, "Well, how'd the cop, how'd the car get there?" That's not, I'm not going to prove their case for them. That's not my job, you know? I got caught for driving under suspension in a parked car without the ignition because when she walked inside, she left the lights on in the car. So I get out, go around, shut the lights off. Sure enough, cop that lives right beside me is so gung ho, he, all he had to do, I guess, is wait on me to pull away or something, but no, I still get a driving under suspension, okay? I cannot keep living the life that I'm supposed to live, which is clean, just a good citizen. I really am. And I keep having these things happen to me, even though I'm trying to do the right thing with them. And then to have a judge tell me that, I mean, what do I do? I mean, it's frustrating because I don't, I'm really at a loss for words because with everything that's happened, and like I said, with my past and stuff, and that's what's coming back to bite me, and I understand that. But what else can I do but the right things? I don't miss court dates. I went, showed up, everything. I even have lawyers and stuff, heck, the obstruction, she kicked it down for, it was a felony because the kid's charges were a felony. She kicked that thing down to a misdemeanor so fast because she would, she knew that she wasn't going to win. My lawyer wanted to take it, but once again, with my record, I take a plea deal, and then there it is. You know what I mean? And so even after all the things that I've done in my life, and then when I'm finally trying to be a productive citizen, pay my bills, everything, I mean, I cannot keep going to jail the third time, okay? Because if there was a problem, then it would have been the first time, the second time, not the third time, okay? And it's getting ridiculous. And like I said, this is all on record. It's all public record. It's all there.
Right.
And I'm getting the raw end of the deal, and...
First thing I want to say is congratulations on if you were on drugs, weren't having problems.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you. I appreciate that. It's a struggle, you know? And to have, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. You know, I think that's huge. I know a lot of people have problems with that. It's not easy to overcome.
No.
So congratulations to that. With what you had brought up to us, we will investigate that for you. I'll check into it. What is the best number to reach you? That's pretty much the best thing, you know, we can do today because obviously...
Right.
You're just presenting it to us and letting us...
It's my word, yeah. I totally understand.
Yeah.
Totally understand. It's just getting to the point where like, even my lawyer and stuff, which has always been a paid lawyer, he said, "Look, the best thing you can do is go to a council meeting, let it be light on what's going on," you know? Because I cannot, when I, honestly, when I was in that parking lot, that parked car, he wanted to give me a disorderly conduct because I wanted to answer him who drove the car there. He's screaming that at me. So either you guys need to get some video cameras on these police officers or in their car or something, because every, all that would have all been proven, exactly what I said. And even when the prosecution can't make its case, and I'm guilty because I can't look at her in her eye? I mean, huh, well, like I said, I'm biting my tongue. It's just, it's frustrating because it just seems like no matter how hard I try and no matter how much I try to help them, or whatever it is I do, I end up getting, I just end up at paying for it, you know? And that's really all I have to say.
Okay.
Other than some water runoff issues, but...
I hope it doesn't change your outlook and make you go back the way you were.
No, no. We've had houses in this town. My dad's worked at Campbell's for 43, 44 years. He owned several different properties. We're a well-to-do family. We keep up. Well, like I said, I was the black sheep in the family, and that's choices I made in the past, you know? And I can't change those, you know? But I'm still in this town. I still pay my bills. I still keep the houses that my parents and them own for renters and stuff, and we understand people fall on hard times. But the hard times I'm having is because I'm not purposely breaking the law. I'm following what they say and even trying to help them. And it's, it's just, it's not right. It's not the way the system's supposed to be, you know? So...
Well, we will check into it, and I appreciate you taking the time to come here.
Yes, definitely. You know, because it's the right thing to do.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item E, reports from council committees. The Electric Committee, Water, Sewer, Refuge, Litter, Recycling Committee, Municipal Properties, Building, Land Use, and ED Committee, Parks and Rec Committee. None of them met due to lack of agenda items. Moving on to item G, introductions of new ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 027-19, resolution authorizing a community investment area CRA agreement between the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and Schenk Properties LLC within Napoleon CRA Number 7, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. As we discussed at the last council meeting, Jay Schenk was here, the owner of the company. He had turned in his CRA application months ago, but we had, before we could actually advance it to the school board for approval, we had to wait for the plat, for the property to get replanted so it could transfer into his name, and then he could start construction. So that's the reason why suspension is being requested on this particular piece of legislation. Nothing has changed since the last time we talked. It's the school board, both school boards, both from Ford County and from Napoleon Area Schools, approved it, 100% tax abatement for 10 years with a 25% payment in lieu of taxes.
Thank you. The motion for suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any other comments or questions regarding this? Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Okay. That is passed under suspension. Moving on to item G2, ordinance number 028-19, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, supplement number 2 for the year 2019, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Did you get both of those? Okay, Joel? All right, Chris.
This is our quarterly budget adjustments, and we're requesting a suspension on that. We reviewed those at Finance and Budget.
A couple weeks back.
Yes.
Motion for suspension?
So moved.
Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments regarding this? Please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed under suspension as well. Moving on to item G3, which is a resolution number 029-19, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of sodium chloride in cooperation with ODOT and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Council President. Again, requesting suspension on this piece of legislation as well. ODOT gives us notice when they need this passed, and they only give us so much time to react. So as we talked at the last meeting, we're going to request suspension on this so that we can get it passed in time. They do want their own standalone resolution every year. We can't just roll this into the master bid ordinance. So check with Chad on that today, and nothing's changed other than that.
All right. Have a motion for suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Have any questions or comments on this?
It's about 500 tons of brown salt coming in. We use up 500 in the previous winter months. We're sitting about 1,500 ton inside the barn, so we'll have about 2,000 when this is done, which is a really good supply for us. So that barn is paying off. Gives us lots of salt, lots of storage, so it's good stuff.
And just looking at the salt prices last year, they tripled or...
They were quadrupled.
Double. At least doubled, a little over double.
So if we don't do this, then we're not guaranteed to get a best rate.
If prices, yeah, exactly. And if prices ever spike, we can go a year without because we have plenty in there, so we can just kind of hang. They really, really jump, so we're good.
Do you have any idea what our salt cost per ton yet?
I don't. Don't know. They're going to bid it out. It'll still be the, whatever we get from ODOT will most likely be the best price we're going to get.
Any other questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Okay. And that has passed under suspension as well. Moving on to item G4, a resolution number 030-19, an ordinance amending certain city of Napoleon traffic schedules, specifically Schedule 2, parking time limits on certain city streets and one-way streets and alleys, as listed in attached Exhibit A, and repealing ordinance number 009-18. Could have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Hey, Joel?
Thank you, Council President. As you can see on the screen, these are the changes to the parking schedule. This has to do with the downtown road project that was completed, the Phase 2 portion of it that was completed last year. In addition to that, we had to change the one-way entrance into the alleyway to the city parking lot, so it would be between Frost Insurance and the apartment building. And there's an alley that's one-way going in. It's not wide enough for two vehicles to get through, so. And no other updates. Requesting first read.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll on first read.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Moving on to item G5, resolution number 031-19, a resolution approving the addition of a $50 per month surcharge to the City of Napoleon, Ohio, employee health insurance premiums, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. Nothing new to report on this either. We did have the Healthcare Cost Committee meeting on Friday, and the semi-annual BORMA meeting was on Thursday, so we got updated on everything that's going on with wellness plans. I was going to offer, did get it on the representative from Chapman and Chapman's schedule to see if he would be able to come in next council meeting, if that's something that council wants to have happen. They can come in and talk further about the wellness program if that's something you want to do. So just requesting first read on this item.
Just go back to the beginning. If they don't have, if they don't have a wellness check by the end of November, does the $50 per month go back to the beginning of the year?
Nope. It goes from that next year, moving forward.
With the addition of spouses, just so that it is.
Yep, with the addition of spouses.
Spouses are not required to do that as well, or will be.
Only spouses that are on the plan.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
No.
That will move on to second read next meeting. Moving on to item H, second readings of ordinances and resolutions, the ordinance number 025-19, an ordinance approving a certain agricultural district located in the city of Napoleon, Ohio, at the location of Apian Avenue, as applied for by H&amp;H Farmland LLC, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel, Billy, you going to take that?
I can do it either. I can do mine now, and you can talk if you want. That's fine. So second read pursuant to Chapter 929 of the Ohio Revised Code, we have 60 days from the day of application to get this passed. If we do not pass it, it is automatically passed on its own. We will not meet again before the expiration of that 60 days, so I would request suspension on this one. And as far as I'm aware, there aren't any changes?
No changes. Had nothing to report.
Okay.
Move suspension.
Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Have any questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken. Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Okay, that passed on second read under suspension. Okay, we have no third reads of ordinances. Move on to item J, Good of the City. J1, Discussion or Action Review, Approval of Power Supply Cost Adjustment Factor for April 2019, as three-month average factor 0.01769, JV2 0.024432, and JV5 0.024432. Joel?
Thank you. There's nothing much to report other than this month's power cost adjustment factor was down a little bit, so.
One of these is it the JV5 that we're going to eventually take off of?
JV5, yes. And actually, we have an agreement to terminate the, I should say, a draft agreement from AMP to terminate our land lease contract with AMP. So as soon as we get through that process, we'll be able to take JV5 off.
Then I won't have to read all those...
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's what we have to worry about, so.
Thank you.
All right. Hope you have a motion to approve the power adjustment costs.
So moved.
Second.
Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
That's been approved. Moving on to item J2, award of contract for the East and West Graceway Drive Street improvements.
Thank you, Council President. Well, we got the bids back. They're up on the screen. And Get Us Paving and Excavating Inc. was the lowest bidder. The project was estimated at $465,000, and the bid came back at $439,837.60. And this would cover both the East and West Graceway, replacing curbs and maybe doing a little, little work with the manholes and then paving.
Have we used them before?
Yeah. I don't know what projects, though.
I've never heard of these people.
Chad's familiar with them.
Travis, I've never heard of these people before.
No, and a citizen brought up to me with some concerns about them.
Yeah, I don't even know where they're from. Do you have any idea?
I don't know exactly where they're from, but I'm familiar with them myself, too, from my past.
Experiences.
They do a lot of work in the, in the city of Toledo area.
I've seen their streets.
Yeah. That was good.
So assuming this is something council wants to do, I need to be directed to draft legislation on this one. Previously, we were, this is not on the master bid list, sorry, council director, the law director, to allow bidding, but just need to be directed to draft this award and go from there. from there.
Have a motion to do that, or are you thinking about another issue there, Jeff?
I guess, yeah, I'm good. And like I said, I've never heard of this outfit before, so this is a new field here for a new contractor. So, I guess we'll try them. And we have Joel in record saying that he knows.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's all on him.
I mean, they followed all the bidding procedures and turned all the requisite documentation, and.
Can we get, talk to somebody that, outside of Toledo, that uses them, that news verification?
We can check references.
Okay. All right.
We'll do that.
I'll make a motion, we direct the law director to draft the legislation.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
That's been approved. Moving on to item J3, award contract for cleaning lime sludge lagoons.
Thank you, Council President. This is for the water treatment plant. We added in our budget to clean the lime sludge lagoons, and Birch Hydro was the lowest bidder, and we got a pretty good price from them, so that's the power of bidding and keeping people honest.
This will be the last time?
Hopefully. You know, we're tossing around some ideas about using these lagoons to handle the salads that are coming from the water plant, even if it's on a temporary basis, until we figure out how we want to permanently handle them, and at the waste park point.
Have we used these people before?
Yeah, Birch has been doing this for.
Same one?
Same one, yep.
That's a significant difference in price.
Yeah.
They've got.
But they're familiar, they've been there before.
Right, I mean, they've done it, yeah.
That is a significant difference in price, though.
Yeah.
Have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Okay, that's been approved. Item J4, awarded contract for the Perry Street Bridge Waterline Hangar Support Replacement and Spot Repair Project.
Thank you, Council President. This is phase two of the work that was started last year. This is phase two of two, and should be completed this year, and won't have to hopefully worry about the water line hanging across the bridge anytime soon. Where the bid we got back is under the engineer's estimate.
Is it the same company that did the other, the phase one?
It is the same company, yep.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C. Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Okay, that's been approved. Item J5 is PC 19-04, preliminary plat on subdivision for Napoleon Senior Center. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Council President. The planning commission met, and we approved this. This is the senior housing developments going in on the end of Raymond Street. Raymond Street will get improved by the city, and then it'll get extended by the company. The construction equipment we use, it's a paper street to the south of Raymond, there's some stone there right now, they'll use a lot of that to get in and out of, it's William Street on your little map there, that's a paper street. They'll use that to get in and out. John Stock was here, who's going to build this, he's going to start in the upper left, upper right-hand corner, basically work his way across, starting there, and work his way to the left, and then he'll put the big building in, and then the other units there, the final units there to the left will be the last phase. One of the residents that lives in the neighborhood is worried about increased traffic, especially construction traffic on Raymond Street, and he was assured that the contract, most of the construction equipment we use, William Street, a lot of equipment, once it gets in, it will be there for the duration, it won't be in and out on a daily basis. Raymond Street is going to get changed a little bit, the gentleman asked those questions, and Mark Spees took them back and showed them the plans, and they're happy with the plans after that. Sidewalk just on one side, which is on the north side of Raymond Street, and on the south side, there's really no other issues. They will have to comply with the construction schedule, basically 7:00 to 7:00 p.m., and John Stock said, hey, if you have other issues, let me know. There should be no heavy equipment in there operating late at night. They may be doing some painting and those kinds of things on the inside of their, inside of their, the units, but nothing on the outside that late at night, so we're pretty happy to end of that, and planning commission approved it unanimously.
Thank you. When would this project begin?
As soon as possible.
And how long do they expect?
They hope to be done this year, late this year. We'll see how soon they get started, and how soon their stuff gets moving, so.
Question, is there income limitations on?
I believe there is. I believe there is, I think it's 55 and over, I think there's a minimum or a maximum income to qualify for.
The max, it has to be under the?
Yeah.
Under the 55, is 55 the maximum?
I think the age is 55.
Okay, the age is 55.
The age is 55, I'm not sure what the income level being, I'm.
Okay. I had that question, that's why I'm asking.
I think you are going to see more traffic down there, just as people moving in and out of that area. Hopefully, there's a lot of people using their carts and rascals, those kinds of things, to get from the senior living to the senior center and back again, is kind of what I'm hoping, so you see more of that than a bunch of cars moving in and out.
Is there anything needed from council today?
Got to, no, well, yeah, approve it.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
If you don't do it, it automatically approves.
Second.
Thank you. Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. Item J6, approval of specifications for the 2019 street striping program. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is a two-year cycle, and we do street striping, requesting approval of the specifications to proceed with bidding. We budgeted $110,000.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes, ma'am.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. Moving on to item J7, approve renewal contract with advanced rehabilitation technology for the sanitary sewer cleaning project, year two.
Thank you, Council President. This is year two of this contract that we're requesting approval for, but this is actually year five of the total project, year five of 10. In the long-term control plan, it states that we're supposed to clean the sewers, get through the entire cycle over a 10-year period, and it's just part of the long-term control plan, and continuing on with what has been mandated for us. And it's actually been a really big help to the sewer system. Dave Pike definitely sees the difference. Over time, comes from common, all you know this, that grit builds up in the bottom of these sewers, and it kind of hardens, so getting a good cleaning in there, and also getting some televising work to see how the conditions of the sewers are, definitely helps.
Okay. Can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Moving on to item J8, renewal of liquor permit in the city. Hey Joel?
Thank you. Per this letter from the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, council, I believe once a year, has a option to object to a liquor permit renewal. Chief, can you talk anything about, you know, if we've had any issues? Have we had any issues?
Nothing that would prevent a renewal. I had, I just had to check all, basically all the addresses that are on here, and there's not been any big relevance. A lot of calls, but nothing relevant.
This is a list of all the permits, and I did see one that was, had a Napoleon address, there's a Holgate address, too, but one of them was Flat Rock, and I think they moved their.
From Holgate.
They moved from Holgate, and to the, where their brew pub was at on Washington Street, and I believe, last time I talked with Lawrence Pritchard, he's looking at getting that address moved to the location that he's at now, he's working with Mark Spees and getting an address for it, so. That's what's going on with that one. We also had a transfer with the, with Spanglers, so you'll see Spanglers on this list twice. We'd have been, I think, doing business with Spanglers, also changed to A-E-S-E-N, prices outside.
He's always been there.
But no other.
No action is needed in this situation. This is just council's opportunity to object, if it wishes, but I don't think there's anything to base any objection on these points.
I'd like to see if it's possible for us to get more beer license.
We checked into that. I know Amanda has. You mean the beer-only ones?
Beer-only.
Yeah, because we got a question about that, and everything that we've gotten back from the state liquor control office has said that, that you can't just get more beer-only licenses. I believe it's the D4s and D5s that you can get more of if you have an entertainment district, and you run out of them, so, and those are the big ones.
I believe that's correct, but let me check into it.
Like I said, I called Amanda Friday, I had a gentleman that's starting, well, he
owns the Old Town Tap.
Oh, okay, yeah, that one.
And since we have an entertainment district, he said, I can't get a license. I said, this is new stuff to me, so I will check it out. I don't know if there's any, like, anything that we can do to that.
So that business had a license, I believe, in the past, and they sold it.
They have, he has a wine and liquor license, but not a beer license.
Okay.
And this is until 1:00 in the morning?
Right.
The more I'm learning about liquor, I know more about the, about these liquor laws now than ever before, and it's.
But I can't believe we don't, we don't have near the establishments in this town that we had in the 80s. Where did all the permits go? Those Dollar General.
They may have had D4s and D5s, which on that, I think you can apply for more.
Depending on the license on which was sold, and some of these, drug stops purchased some of these licenses, that were sitting dormant in the city. But I can check in to see if we can get some more, or what the status is anyway.
Yeah, he would like to. Like I said, he's running, like, I think it's the name of it, El Gracie's or something like that, he's got a little taco wagon.
Taco shop right here?
No, this is something else.
This is north of the district. The sign's been there for years.
Yeah, that's right.
He's had a problem with the kitchen.
Is that what it is?
Because of this grill that was set up there when it was porkies and stuff, well, the health department said, well, you can't have your grill out here. You've got to have it in the back, you've got to have a different, you know, the grill just can't be right there behind the bars where you like to have it, and then once he found that, after he did everything, he didn't have the money or the funds to put it in the back and do everything, so that's from.
And there's no direction.
Yeah, is what his problem was, he split the health department.
Thank you.
Yep, he's told me he's worked that out, and like I said.
Good.
He talked to me Friday.
I mean, we have.
I apologize, because it was like a month or two ago when I talked to him, so.
We have D4s and D5s available, but those are pricier.
Sure.
Okay, I'll ask, what's a D4, what's a D5?
Ah, I think D4s, you can serve until, you can serve until 2:00 a.m.
Okay.
And a D5, I believe, you can, you can, they can still consume past until 2:30.
Is it beer, wine, liquor, the whole thing, the D4s and D5s?
So, pardon?
Yeah, D4s and D5s are everything?
Yeah.
Beer, wine, liquor.
Beer, liquor, wine, yep.
You said a D5?
A D5 has something to do with, you can't serve after 2:00 a.m., but I believe if somebody has, a patron has a, has a drink, they can.
Until 2:30.
Until 2:30, yeah. I believe, and I gotta, I gotta check on it exactly, but the, but the D4 is definitely the 2:00 a.m. one.
On the spot, I haven't memorized the types of liquor licenses, I'll just tell you that straight out, I don't, I can certainly bring back an explanation.
No, I just.
That's what you.
It's, yeah, the liquor laws are.
It's a pain, and I know that there were businesses that are interested, and I'd like to see if there's something, I know Amanda's done the research already, and I'm fairly certain that the research she's done is accurate, but I'm happy to look into it as well, and maybe there's some lobbying.
Yeah. I'm sure you would like that.
Yeah, what we were told is it's based on population, that's it. And there's no deviating from that, is what we were told, but, yeah, we can definitely look into it.
What I feel really nice about is that it's not been that long ago that we were very close to questioning some businesses on here because of the amount of police activity and stuff like that, and we haven't had any. Yeah, we haven't had any, so, I mean, at least the establishments that are doing it are taking care of business.
The sense of the law has so much, you know, just have little areas, I'm sorry, I went up, just have little areas for people to go out and smoke, and still be able to enjoy their drink, you know what I mean? It's really cut down a lot of issues as far as being outside the bars and walking down streets with alcohol and stuff like that, they have a place to go, so that in those gates that you guys approved, or whatever, the areas, has really helped a lot with that issue, in my mind anyways, I go up there, you know? I think that's a great idea for a lot of places.
Good to hear that side of it, because we've heard a lot of good things about the way it looks, just from, you know, people from out of town driving through and seeing the nice patios and things, but a functional reason, and that's nice to hear that side, too.
Yeah, I enjoy it anyways.
Does the license stay with the address? Like, why does Brick and Brew's need to be renewed?
So it's a business thing, if I recall correctly, it has more to do with the business owning that license. So he would, if the business were to move, assuming it stayed in that specific area, like if it stayed in the block or something like that, I don't think there would be an issue. I mean, I'm sure they'd have to run it by Liquor Control, but I don't think, but when you, when you transfer businesses, like, I think, well, obviously Spanglers was just sold, so, new ownership, they've got to apply for all the same stuff. Really testing my recollection of the liquor.
Yeah.
I would have studied up a little bit if I didn't know this was going to.
(laughing). The meeting was going a little fast, so that's why.
(laughing). We were going to get home a little quick.
Yeah.
We always get excited about talking about liquor.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, so we'll move on to item J9, acceptance of donations to the K-9 unit program.
Thank you. Yep. The, this is from the firefighters' union. They donated $500 to Donuts the Dog.
Is that the name?
No, that's their name.
That's what they.
I think that's a shout of the police.
Yeah.
Listen to that laugh, Chief O'Brien back there.
Yeah. And this is from the Volunteers Association, another $500.
Awesome.
And then we also had a $50 donation from Shirley Walker and Nancy Bainton. Yeah, yeah, please.
There was a check determined today as well, they didn't make the package, and that's from Lumber Yard, like, you could have for a second annual anniversary, if you would, but a donation there, so they donated.
Three hundred.
Three hundred and fifty.
Fifty, yes.
Thank you.
How much is, how much is the donation, I mean, the total number of donations? How much?
Currently, it's $5,000, and it was kind of all saved money from, that's in my capital budget, we're at $1,650, so.
We've got enough to go?
Twenty.
Fifteen was our minimum target, twenty's our kind of more realistic target, but yeah, we're to the point where I'm researching which program we're going to build it.
Okay.
As far as whether, I guess, the final two are probably on calendars, if, as far as classes.
Great. I mean, it's impressive that the community is showing this much support.
I was going to talk to Kitty when we were on the.
Very nice to see the opportunity.
That's bad jokes.
And if you want, we can add in the next packet, just the list of who all donated and the amounts.
So we have a running total of the Kitty, if you will, for the.
Nice, yep.
Councilman Haste said he was going to give you a blank check, you could just fill in the amount.
With no number on.
(laughing).
Can I have a motion to accept these donations?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Okay, that's been accepted. Uh, moving on to item J10, acceptance of donation to Safety City.
Thank you, uh, you see the check here, it's from United Way of Henry County, we got, they donated, uh, $622 for Safety City.
Awesome, great. Anyone wanna make a motion to accept it?
Uh, do we have enough people to run that this year? Are we?
Well.
Okay, yes. All right.
We're doing as planned at this point.
All right. So moved. Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff Adam.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Arielle.
Yes.
Hey, accepted, J11, acceptance donation of benches for downtown from the Chamber of Commerce and Napoleon Alive.
Thank you, Council President. Um, the Chamber of Commerce and Napoleon Alive, uh, have collaborated together to donate benches to the city to put in downtown. They have eight benches in total. Um, you can see they spent a little over $2,400 for all of the benches, they have them all assembled. Um, and they have locations picked out, they don't have them mapped out, but we have to verify that these are, these locations are gonna be okay. Uh, to make sure that we have enough clearance on the sidewalks for people to walk by and, and, uh, they're not obstructing anything and make sure that the business owners are okay with, uh, putting the benches in front of their establishments. So, little bit of homework to do, but they, they do have, uh, eight, eight total benches, I don't know if I said that or not, it's in the letter. And, um, just need to accept them as a donation.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff Adam.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Arielle.
Yes.
The benches have been accepted.
What are they made of?
Oh, you know what, I have a picture of one.
That just hopes and drinks.
Go ahead. No, these, none of these are out there. Yeah, there, there's some, there's some private business owners that have their own.
So these will be mounted, right, Joel, to...
Yep, they will be mounted.
To the sidewalk or...
And we're looking at, we're looking at, you can see on the, on the feet here, zoom in a little bit.
Anchor bolts?
So we're probably gonna do an anchor bolt, one on one side and one on the other, one front and back, opposite side of each other, that way it's less holes in the ground and the concrete and, uh, um, I've, I've seen them do that in other cities to reduce the amount of drilling into concrete.
That way you can get them with an F-150 pickup instead of a 250.
Yeah. Well, what they're thinking is that they want them all set back, and Jeff, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about it.
No, you're doing a fine job. I personally lifted one, we, we carried it down the stairs from Doug's, uh, from Eddie J's to look at them. They probably weigh about 50 pounds and it's, it's a, made of metal, very nice looking, they're gonna put a plaque on the back, if someone wants to donate it, and they're gonna have a plaque that they can put on the back there with, uh, somebody's name.
Oh, nice. Great.
But they do need to be bolted to the concrete, I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah. And they'll be oriented so that they face the streets, not so that their backs are, and they're facing the buildings. I know there's a lot of question and a lot of different communities do it in different ways, so, um, we're thinking that, set them down and have them face the street, closer to the buildings.
All right, we will go around the table here. We started first today.
As everyone knows, today was tax day. And I have to say, this is the first due date that we have had, the door was open all day long and the line was to the flight pole. When I went outside at, uh, 5 till 4, uh, we were at the flight pole. And it was continuous all day long. We have done extended hours for nearly 20 years. This year's only been our best. We had, um, they estimated 150 to 200 people during that week that we came in. When we first started, we were always open four days and a Saturday and we'd get maybe a dozen. And as the years picked up, it picked up, but this is the most that we've had, which we weren't getting a lot of mail in, so we're glad to see that because we, the active, activity came towards the end, so... So, everybody worked hard because tomorrow's, um, your utility bills due, so we were extremely busy. Both sides were extremely busy today.
I guess I have a question, or maybe in the future, and, um, we could talk to the new finance director when we get here, or, I'm trying to figure out maybe a, um, a different location for this time of year where people aren't having to stand outside and I, I drove by, it's all, you know, the door's open, so obviously we get cold air inside offices and, um, if we know we're gonna have a lot of people, but, you know, make it a little bit better for them and for the employees. We'll just bring that up later on and see if there's anywhere else we can do that.
Okay.
Well, thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you, everybody worked hard today.
They did a good job.
I was gonna say that.
I wasn't gonna bring up that you were waiting till the last minute today to file your tax.
And who was in line right in front of me?
Who was driving by and saw her?
Even despite all those people there, I went there to pay my utility bill and I was still in and out there a minute and a half, two minutes. So, I mean, it was, they, they did a great job.
Lori?
Just that.
What?
Efficient and pleasant, it was a pleasant experience, so I appreciate it.
I have nothing. Dan?
Number one, I'm very glad that you're back in running the meetings, Mr. President, and hopefully your health continues to improve.
Thank you.
On a daily basis. Uh, number two, I have seen that our crews are out working on potholes, especially out by the high school. Oakwood Avenue had a deli that I hit. But I, I know that's a, a major issue this time of year, trying to get all those, but, um, it, it seems that they're out working on those. And just a reminder, the city cleanup comes here the week of the 29th. And just a reminder to residents not to start putting stuff out tonight, uh, to wait till the, I want about, oh, five days ahead of time, isn't that what they usually say, something like that?
Seems like.
Seems like so, but the cleanup is the week of the 29th and, um, remind citizens to review the requirements for that cleanup, and that's, that's all.
You mean the community rocks there, that's free.
Napoleon verification.
That's awesome.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, the only thing I have is already been talked about, just a nice job, Chris, thanks for all your...
Thank you, let everybody know.
That's it.
Travis?
I have nothing.
Jeff Free, just echo what Lori and the mayor said, thank you for all the extra hours you put in there.
Thank you.
Hopefully all the hard work that Billy's done and enforcement has brought more people in and, so, thank you, Billy, for your part, being a...
I had, I had to pull one of the tax people.
Yeah.
Because we had a tax trial today where the guy was not willing to admit, even though he, we had a filed version copy of his 2016 tax returns that was turned in in March of this year with his signature and his W-2 and everything, easiest thing in the world, and I had to pull the tax department, I'm sorry. The judge set the date without asking.
I believe that was the case last year too, so we're used to it now.
Hey, Kent?
Nothing, except the terrible loss of history in Paris today.
Yeah, yeah, I heard that. Billy?
It's good to have you back, hopefully you're feeling better.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
No?
Thank you. Um, up on the screen I have the, I know we talked in a committee meeting, um, I think it was Water and Sewer Committee, about a, uh, the Big G's restaurant and the high, uh, usage of water. The water meter, obviously you can see with the numbers tested, uh, very well. And, um, a little low on the low side and a little low on the high side, but that's, that's actually typical of, uh, of a water meter, so, um, it's in the, uh, AWWA standards. Uh, just wanted to close the loop on that.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Um, yeah, Kent starts Monday, how about that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I got an item for the Safety and Human Resources Committee, um, and this is for the adjunct instructor for the fire training facility. So if we could add that, Mr. Chairman, to the, uh, to the committee meeting, I believe there's a, there's another item on the agenda as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, not to my knowledge, but...
Was there, was there one, do you know?
Not, no, not that I know of, I don't think there is.
Oh, okay.
At least not part of it.
Okay, okay. Um, and was, Chris, was there a safety, or I'm sorry, a finance and budget committee meeting?
No, not that I can think of anything.
I mean, this isn't anything urgent, so, can we, you wanna, you wanna get this through quickly?
I'd like to get, yeah, I'd like to get it through if, uh, you wanna talk about this month, if not, we can wait till next month, it's not a real deal.
I'm not doing anything next Monday night. No. You, you on the committee? Yep. Time?
Good.
6:30? Hey, that's my day off, if school's closed that day, don't push it, we'll go for seven. School's closed, I'm taking the day off, but I'll run the meeting, yes.
Um, also, I found out today that in order for us to apply for a TID grant, uh, through the state of Ohio, ODOT, um, we'll need a resolution, a standalone resolution from council to do that, so I'm gonna request that, uh, council direct the law directive to draft the requisite, uh, legislation needed for us to apply for this grant, if that's all right with everyone?
Make a motion? So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff Adam.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Arielle.
Yes.
And last item I have is that the golf course is open and it's looking really nice out there on a nice day.
That's right.
Uh, course is looking good, hole number four, obviously that's the part that, that floods the most, there's, uh, you know, I think once the season gets going, growing season gets going, that'll fill in some of the patches there.
The most important part was, is that the trees weren't grown, so neither of us lost a ball.
Yeah, right.
There.
I heard from Joel, said it's because you don't hit very far, so...
I just aim to get past the red tees. That's all I have.
That is?
Yep.
All right. And item K, executive sessions, we have none. Moving on to, uh, item 11, or, I'm trying to, L, approve payments of bills and approve financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment bills and financial reports shall stand approved?
Nope.
But there is an objection or a question?
No, just a question, what are we doing on Meekuson Street, Mr. City Manager?
Which, uh, which page are you on? Right now, we're getting ready to, we're getting ready to start design work. Right here, um, this is for the design of, of Meekuson. Uh, I believe, uh, yeah, it, it was budgeted, um, and, uh, this has been a project, I guess, that's been on the list for a long time, according to Chad, and the, um, I believe it is a sewer project, there's a sewer replacement component to this.
How much sewer work can we do on this outside? That's, I don't understand myself. You know, I used to work in a wastewater plant back in the nineties, they raised rates here in the void, 45% the one year, to do the south side project. Well, that was supposed to take care of that. It's just year after year after year, more work we're doing on the south side. I, I just don't understand what is going on.
Tell you what I can do, I, I can take a look at the televising myself too, and, and see what the condition is of the sewers, um, since I did use to do that. And, uh, I'm told that Meekuson and Third Street are both in, in, uh, pretty severe disrepair, so...
Is it manuf, or, uh, contractor issues when it was put in?
They're, they're old sewers, and the road, the road's deteriorating, I believe, on Meekuson as well.
Well, I know that one, but, I mean, we redid the south side.
Yeah.
I mean, when I was first on.
I, I, I just, how much sewer work can you do when it's supposed to have been already done? Just amazes me, Joe.
Yeah.
Because we had, we had that little south side tore up at one time.
I don't think this, this segment was, was replaced as a part of that, though. Like I said, if you give me a chance, this, let me, let me take a look at it and, and see if, what the, uh, what the needs are.
Would you comment?
Yeah, um, they've been, so this is a south side sewer and stuff, I live on High Street, and I believe High Street is named High Street because it's the highest point in the void. And a long, I don't know how many years ago, but that's how it's got its name, and the old mayor's right next to me. And we don't have a problem with our sewers or anything like that, but the problem is, is the middle of our block, our backyard, you know, everybody's backyard that's in that block, it floods, there'll be a foot of water laying out back there. We're all paying our water runoff and stuff, but the thing is, is the water's not running to the city, it's running in the back because it's so low, and it's just a mosquito mess because they're so busy with the south side all the time. And it's, they just need to do some kind of different culvert or something because you, we can't use, I can't even use my backyard. I can't even walk out there because that water's just laying there, and that, that's the other issue I'm here for, is just, is, is the sewage problem where I'm at. You know, it's not draining, and I think I have two culverts, um, all together while I'm high, and there's actually one, I think, on Woodline Court, but it, it can rain and that water, it'll take a week and a half for that water to just gear out back there. And it's just a mosquito infested mess, you know, and there's just gotta be something where that water can be drained to one of the water runoff or the culverts, and I don't think it would be that difficult to do. I mean, I love to tear my yard up to do it.
Joel, is that something we can check into?
Yeah, we can follow up with that one.
It's just, it's just, uh, it's just, uh, something to think about, I guess.
All right, thanks. Any other questions on that?
No, I, I'm just airing, I, like I said, I don't understand.
Uh, can I get, can I just fill you in on something? Definitely, obviously, I think everybody here would agree with us that, um, not in favor of doing projects that aren't necessary. And obviously, that just affects the rates, the more projects we do, if we can prolong some of them, that'd be great too, because we are looking at a big water, uh, wastewater plant rehab project. So anything we can do to not impact sewer rates as much as possible is, is the, the strategy that, at least I'm looking at right now, so that, um, I mean, there, there has to be a proven need, an absolute need for the project for it to go forward, there's just no, no getting around it. There are a lot of road projects that are, that are needed, but, um, as for sewer projects, I mean, you heard from, from, um, John Courtney, you know, where our sewer rates are at right now?
Sure.
A lot of that has to do with long-term control plan. Um, as of right now, Meekuson Street is on the long-term control plan, but as we've been talking, it takes a very long time to negotiate these things with the EPA. Uh, we're looking at negotiating a lot of these projects out, but in a lot of cases, we've gotta proceed as if we're still in this long-term control plan too, so, that's the reason...
Well, I understand that, but I don't, how much sewer work can you do on a street?
Understood.
I think for Meekuson, we ought to experiment with hard dirt pack again. Cheap.
We're not going there, like, somebody will be calling me tomorrow.
I actually have a relapver that's out behind my house, and when it rains, it's actually sits in, it sits in water, it sits in water for a good up to six inches to a foot, and the peephole runners that are back there, it's, it's just a constant battle with them fighting the water, and I just, I don't know what to do.
All right, uh, no objections or corrections, and they stand approved?
Yeah, I'm just, just wondering, how much work can you do?
I do have a quick mulligan for the city, I just have a question, um, for the street projects that we have planned for 2019, um, for the next meeting, would you be able to bring us a schedule of when each of them are gonna start and maybe...
Yep.
When they're gonna be finished and those kind of things?
No problem.
I've had people asking, especially Haley.
It'll be, it'll be estimates, but, you know, I mean, it's within a range when they're gonna start and when they're expected to finish.
That'd be great. All right, did I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Arielle.
Yes.